Okay, call the meeting back to order here and we'll start with item three. Public hearings and presentations tuned by the board. Item A, questions from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any question previously discussed through administrative channels and not on the agenda will be granted five minutes to make a presentation to the board. Please state your name for the record. See, no one will go on to. Item B, presentation on agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on any items on the agenda will be granted five minutes to make a presentation. Please state your name for the record. Okay, so we'll go on to item four, the consent agenda. A consent agenda is utilized by the Rala Board of Education as a means of dealing with routine matters which must be considered by the Board of Education but require a minimum of discussion. All Board of Education members receive and review written information supporting the items listed on the consent agenda well in advance of the meeting. While any Board of Education member is welcome to remove any item from the consent agenda for separate consideration or discussion for any reason, normally all items on the consent agenda are approved in one motion with a minimum of discussion. So it is recommended that the following items be approved, and that's items A through I. Except we don't have anything under item I for this. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion we approve consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, Carla. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Carla. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carried. New business, item A is the District Operations Steering Committee. Mr. Housen will present information about the planning process for reopening school for the 2020-21 school year.
Gina, you want to check, is Mike working okay? Thank you. RD, you ready? You need a little time to get it set up?
I'm ready.
Okay. So tonight I want to talk about planning for the 2021 school year and what we might look like after what we've been through the last few months with the COVID shutdown. So we'll go through a lot, I'll make a recommendation for what we will look like and some contingency plans along the way, but we'll just, we'll just jump in. So first of all, we've been through a pretty long process here to get to this point of planning for the school year, and all along we've been working under a set of goals that we've been working toward, and I thought we'd need to put these up to begin with. Everything that we're doing is trying to provide a safe environment for our students and staff, and one that provides for the physical, social, emotional, and mental health of our students and staff. And that's a, that's a big job, setting up a school with what we're going through that accomplishes all those things. We are trying to greatly reduce risk and create a plan that's responsive to what is seemingly never-ending changing conditions as we move through this summer toward August. We want to provide a high-quality education experience for all of our students. We want guidelines that are age-appropriate and have proper expectations for our kids. And everything that we are doing is trying to make sure that we can get through a full year of instruction without needing to close down again. So, and I'll say this, you know, when we get new teachers into the district, really the only lecture we have them sit through is about our belief that what makes a good school district is people and not programs. So as we move through this planning, you know, we are considering, these are people, these are your kids coming to school, these are your spouses who are teaching, these are community members. It's not about making sure that certain programs can continue to function, it's about making sure that we have a plan that meets the needs of the people. That's what we're about, we're a people business. So we want to make sure that we have things that address the needs of the people that are in here. One caveat I will say to this is this plan is current as I stand here on July 16th, 2020. As I mentioned, it seems like the conditions are changing quickly, so we reserve the right here to change these plans as conditions in Phelps County and Missouri change, but as of now, this is where we stand. There's a lot of guidance out there about what schools should look like this fall. These are the main resources that we used. Guidance from the Missouri School Boards Association, Department of Secondary, Elementary and Secondary Education, along with DHSS put out a guidance document just last week that has been integral in our planning. The American Association of Pediatrics had a guidance document about the health and wellness of kids and the importance of being in school if at all possible. Work from the Phelps Mary's Health Department and our cooperation with them at a local level to be safe and put in phases of entry into school. Our music, our insurance council, we've talked with providers at Phelps Health to understand best practices and, and some testing protocols that we can put in place. And I'll tell you, every, every district in the state of Missouri is working through this, so there's been a very good network of statewide school districts, but parts of the state are very different. But we, we've been talking with schools from across the state, but also schools here in our region about what we look like and how we might open safely. So beginning back in June, we did put together a district steering committee from across the district, 30 members from across the district, and these are secretaries, teachers, librarians, coaches, band directors, music teachers, every area to try and cover the full operations of the district, and we've been meeting on a weekly basis to both identify the issues that we need to solve, to understand the needs of kids and adults, no matter their job assignment in the district. And this group has been integral in helping us to define our plan and define the big rocks that we need to get put in place in our plan to make sure that we have covered. Past the district steering committee, our district administrative team has been meeting, will continue to meet in the next few weeks to finalize, as I like to say, those big rocks getting down into the nitty-gritty details that will need to be in place if we are to reopen. The Patron Insight Survey, Kenda Seagart came to us and offered to do a community and parent survey for us. We pushed that out in late June and July. We looked at the responses and the feedback, and I'm going to discuss that here in just a moment. And the Patron Insight Survey was, was about two, two different looks at this, how we did during the shutdown in the spring and how our response met people's needs, and then also looking ahead to what we might look like this fall, and I'll discuss both sides of that survey. And then finally, we last week pushed out a full survey to our staff, and I'll get into the types of things that we surveyed them about and some of the results that came from that. So I did want to talk about the Patron Insight Survey here before we move along any further. There are four items up there, academics, responsiveness, communication, and our student meal program that directly relate to the community telling us how we did during the closure from March through the end of the school year. They asked them to rate us on a four-point rating scale, just like a GPA, so a four would be a perfect score, three, two, one. Under each of those subsets of academics, responsiveness, communication, and student meal, student meal program, there were descriptors asking them about various parts of each one of those responses. And you can see that range of scores is from the low to the high that we received in each one of those categories. Under academics, you see the widest range and the lowest low score there at 2.52, up to a high of 3.10. You know, when we closed down, we did implement a do-no-harm grading policy in which we were trying to keep kids engaged but not punish them for an immediate switch to a learning environment for which they had had no training and very little preparation. We received very high marks from a lot of people for doing that, for the care that it showed for families and students. We also, there were also those in the community, justifiably so, who wished we had done more and pushed learning forward at a faster pace. So opinions varied on the effectiveness of that approach. I will tell you, I'll save that for later. So looking back, I don't think we would have changed that structure. I think there were some things that we could have tweaked and done a little better during that time, but I'm very proud of the teachers, the staff, everything that they did to switch on a dime from teaching in a seated environment to trying to move to an online learning system, something that they had never done before. So were we perfect? No, we would never say we were perfect, and I think the feedback in the survey gave us a lot of good things to think about. But I will tell you, I'm very proud of our response and what we were able to provide for our students during that time. Under responsiveness, you see very high scores and a very tight range of scores, 3.32 to 3.41. That was a rating about our ability to respond to parents' questions, needs, request for information as they contacted us, very good scores there. Rating on our overall communication about what was going on with the closure, what was going on in the district, 3.22 to 3.38, very high scores as well. Under student meal program, 2.8 to 3.48, some of the comments, people were very thankful that we provided that, especially during a very trying time when it was needed. The low scores would indicate that we did the best we could to get them meals. Some hoped for more hot meals as opposed to the cold meals that we served. But again, very proud of our food prep, planning, and everything that the food service program did to provide meals for the families of the community. We continue to provide meals on a daily basis for our summer school and for any student in the district that wants to pick them up at the high school, so I think they're continuing to do really good work. But overall, I would say the community rated our response to how we handled the shutdown very strongly, and I appreciate their thoughts a lot. Jim?
Ken mentioned in the report that 2.8 was considered as a good response. So anything above a 2.8?
Anything above a 2.8 would be considered a very positive response, almost like on a GPA, that's a, that's a B, B-minus average in there. So yeah, really good report there. The part of the Patron Insight Survey I want to move to is our families looking ahead to next year. As you can expect, we got a wide range of responses to that question. There are many, many who want us to open up and offer seated classes in the fall with little to no restrictions in place, all the way to the other end to those that don't believe that it is safe enough yet to bring students back. And I think you'll see that feedback reflecting in the plan that I'm going to share with you tonight. And I guess I would say everything in the middle is included there as well, but I think that's kind of where, where we are. Under remote learning issues, we did ask about what are the biggest, what were the biggest challenges that families faced when trying to move to an online learning environment? The factors that the respondents indicated causing the most problems were just, the number one issue was just their child's ability to learn online, which is a whole new setting that many of them were not used to. Parents being able to provide the necessary support to their students' learning was a major obstacle. 24% said they didn't have enough devices for all of their children, which is certainly something that we can help solve for them. And then 20% said that childcare was an issue. With working parents and a student at home, it's very difficult to have someone with those younger children, someone to look after them and help them. So that is a burden on our parents when that happens. The only other thing that I'll pull out is in this survey, which is certainly not a representative survey of our entire district, but the split between those that had access to high-speed internet and those that didn't was a split of 84% did, 16% did not. So I know what the margin of error with that, that would, what the margin of error would be to get to the true numbers for our entire district, but I'd say it'd be plus or minus 5% roughly would probably be pretty accurate. So, Board members, I sent the Patron Insight Survey to all of you. Did any of you have any comments that stood out or any takeaways from that that you want to add now?
I read all the comments. So just the summary comments, there was 15 pages of summary comments, and like you said, they were all over the board. So a single plan, a single option will not work for everybody.
I would agree.
From reading those comments, they will not accept a single option.
Correct.
Regardless of what you would say would not.
And, and we're going to get to that. We are going to have options that hopefully will meet the needs of all the families in the community, and I'll show you that here briefly. The, the other group that obviously we need to talk to is our Rala 31 staff, and this is both certificated teaching staff as well as support staff in all of our buildings. We sent out a pretty lengthy survey, and the types of things that we asked them about was their views on the, on what our guidelines should be for personal protective equipment or face coverings in our building, where they were and their beliefs on what would keep everyone safe, what the staff and student health screenings prior to being able to come to school should look like, what our instructional design, how we deliver learning in the district, what that should look like, their own personal comfort level toward returning to a seated environment in a building with several hundred students. We did allow them to also sign up to come meet with Dr. Dare and the principals if they have personal serious health concerns that could put them in a high-risk category for coming back to work. Knowing that we would, there would be some type of online learning possibilities going on, we did allow teachers to express their interest in teaching an online class should that be available. And then we left open as much space as they needed for open questions and comments, and we received a lot, and a lot of questions, a lot of positive comments, a lot of concerned comments. Again, I would say that it spanned the range, just like in the Patron Insight Parent Survey, because, you know, we're all parents, we're all community members here in Rala, we all want what's best for the community and for our kids, but we want to do it safely, and I think that came through in the questions and comments that the staff asked. I will, I just, a little, I didn't make a slide about all of the results there, I will tell you that the first choice of our staff is to return in some type of combination of seated and online classes. Their general comfort level out of a perfect five in returning to work is a 4.1. So overall, there's a general comfort should we have them come back to work, certainly not across the board, but overall, there's a general comfort level. Which brings me to our proposed learning options that we would like to communicate out to the community. We would like to communicate that on August 24th, we will offer parents a choice of the type of educational setting they would like for their child. We will open our buildings for seated classes in each building, and let me describe that here first. When I say we will reopen for seated classes, that does not mean that our buildings will look like they did prior to the closure. They will look very different with safety mitigation efforts in place. I will describe to you some of the things that we will be doing to make our buildings safe for kids to come back. We will be doing some cohort modeling, in other words, limiting the number of students that any one student will come in contact with during the day, keeping a group of students together and not mixing with the rest of the building. I'll be describing some social distancing steps that we're putting in place as is possible, some changes in our daily routines. Passing periods will not look the same with a building full of kids in the hallways and classes marching up and down the halls during the time. We will still get to those places, but we will do so in a more scheduled manner. We will alter our scheduled and teaming approaches, especially at the elementary and middle school level. So we will still do some team teaching, but more than likely, the teachers will be, the teachers will be trading rooms rather than having students trade spaces in the hallway to sit in other students' desks. Dr. Williams is looking at revising our learning objectives to address issues caused by the closure during the spring this past year, and help teachers design their pacing guides so that we get kids caught up and get their full year of education under their belts. We do not want to lose any more time with our students educationally. We will also be looking at in our buildings ways to, I put eliminate, eliminate's probably a strong word, greatly, greatly reduce the amount of large group gatherings that are in a building. So large group assemblies all together in the gym, those types of things, those we will not be able to do if we're going to do a seated option in a way that will allow us to make it through the entire year. Now, we also heard loud and clear and certainly understand fully that not everyone is ready to send their kids back to a seated learning environment. So parents will have a choice between coming back to a seated environment or moving to an online learning environment. Now I want to be clear that the online learning environment we're describing is not the same as what they saw in the spring. It's not merely a way to review lessons and stay engaged. This is a full online learning environment. Students will be accountable for their coursework, they will see, they will receive grades for their coursework just as they do in a seated environment. The amount of work will be similar to what they would see if they were in seated classes for a day. The classes will be aligned with Missouri learning standards, and I will tell you, this is not brand-new. Already in current state provisions, there was a provision for students to learn in an online setting, but we will be offering it in a much greater extent. We will have, Dr. Williams is currently finishing up, she just handed me a proposal as we walked down to this meeting, for licenses that we will purchase to be able to have our teachers interacting with students, helping them, but in an online learning environment, so teacher support and contact. We will be pushing out that availability. I would say next week is a safe bet that we will start allowing people to make that choice. I certainly understand too that there'll be, parts of this plan are not complete yet, and so we will leave it, leave it open through the final board adoption of this plan so that people can make the right decision for their families. Now, when we do this, we would expect that parents make a choice for at least a quarter or at the high school level where we're giving credit for a semester length. We don't want people bouncing back and forth between a seated option and an online option. Now, having said that, certainly aware that if a family sends their child back for a seated option and as they go become less comfortable with being around that amount of people, we will allow people to move to the online side and finish. We're, we're not going to say, we're not going to educate you, okay? So, but moving from the online into a seated is the direction that we probably will not allow until the end of a grading period. We will also be purchasing increased Wi-Fi hotspots to help families out who need it, and knowing that not all people who want to learn away from the seated classes have internet access, we will work with those families on distance learning in a non-online mode as well. We, that goes back to one of our goals, providing a quality education for every student in our district. We have to have the flexibility to do that. So, want to sum up one more time. Our plan on August 24th is to open our buildings for seated classes for students to re-enter, but also giving parents the option of instead choosing an online class or a distance learning mode if they don't have access, should that meet their needs. If you have questions about what exactly that would look like, we will certainly, Dr. Williams, myself, would certainly be available to speak with parents to let them understand, get them a better idea of what that will look like. Right, Dr. Williams?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Hey? Now, other considerations that we made, on the left, you can see online instruction for all. We have saved that at this point for our contingency plan, should we need to close the schools again. And I want to reemphasize again, if we do, it will not look like it did in the spring. It will be fully accountable classes, will be fully aligned to the Missouri learning standards, and we will be pushing learning forward should we have to close down due to a, to a spike in COVID. Okay? It will be true online schooling that we will pivot to should we have to, should we have to close again, which hopefully we will not. Now, one thing we did consider is a hybrid approach where we would have a partial amount of students seated, and I'm, I'm just going to use this example, let's say, half the students come on Monday and Tuesday, the students that aren't there Monday and Tuesday are doing online learning. We would then flip-flop those groups and welcome those other students in on Wednesday and Thursday. The group that was seated Monday and Tuesday would do online learning, and then Friday would be a full online learning day for everyone. At this point, we are not proposing that to you. The challenge that creates as equal burden on childcare, I believe, as the full online does, because you will have kids needing childcare at some point every week. It does make a consistency of instruction difficult, but I would certainly move to the discretion of the board if that's a model that you would like us to put back on the table. This would be in response, again, this would be as a response to a spike in COVID cases in our county or in our school district. We can certainly put that back on the table. At this point, our contingency plan, should we have to close, is to move to online instruction for all. Okay? Before I get, I'm now going to dive into kind of a little bit more of how we got here and some of the safety precautions we're putting in place in the buildings. Any comments or questions about either one of these?
When are you expecting us to give the approval? Would that be the July 30th meeting, or is that not till the August meeting?
No, so we, we are going, later on in your agenda, we are going to ask that an additional board meeting be added in July. At that time, we would ask for your full approval, not, I'm hoping you'll just let us move forward on this and communicate this tomorrow with Gina to our community so they know what's coming. The finer details, we would ask you to approve at the additional meeting in July, July 30th, Anything else there?
Craig?
Yes?
So in your planning, which you don't have completed yet, I'm sure, this scenario, but you get a case in a classroom and the classroom has to go home, what's your contingency plan for that?
Jill, do you want to talk about a pivot plan? It is.
Yes, so I'm currently working with teachers to align the curriculum for the entire year. And it's my hope that every teacher will begin to put their lessons in an online platform from the beginning of school, and in the event we have a cohort which has to be dismissed for 14 days or whatever the time period is, that we'd be able to pivot directly into the classroom where the parents already trained, the students already trained, and to receive those lessons remotely with perhaps contact from the teacher by telephone or by computer. So we're, we'll have a plan in place, a pivot plan for the cohort.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
So with that, then there wouldn't be a gap?
Right.
No gap.
And, and the beauty of that, that's what we're currently working on with our staff. Our staff have been remarkable to receive me so quickly with all of the directives I've handed to them because they're fabulous, but that we're diligently working toward that. I would say the first part of August, we'll be ready to move online with our lesson planning, and then each teacher hopefully will have further discussions about being ready to pivot regardless of which cohort or how many have to move online for 10, 14 days or when we determine it's safe to come back.
So are they doing some extra training on how to do that?
We have a fabulous tech team who's been working for years in the Google Classroom, the Google platform, and many of our teachers already have that training and understand that, but I am providing all the scaffolding I can for preparation of what does that look like in the classroom, what does that look like, so that we can look at the entire year with one snapshot to know that no objectives are missed throughout the year, and then we'll go from there. If teachers ask for additional training, we'll have our tech team, our tech coaches work with them, and I volunteer.
So I would say, Mark, we have a lot of teachers ready to do that now from the training we provide, and we'll be looking to build the skills of those who may not be ready so that they are in case we need them. So planning considerations, these are bullets, and I actually have a screen for each of these, I'm not going to spend a lot of time here, but these are the areas that we've been working through to get plans in place for a safe return to seated instruction. Dr. Dare is leading for us. The acquisition of all the cleaning supplies. The acquisition of all the cleaning supplies that we need, including electrostatic sprayers which will sanitize a room in 10 to 15 minutes when, once we clear it, hand sanitizer, hand sanitizer stations throughout each of our buildings, a sanitizer solution for each classroom, and then obviously working with our custodial, custodians on schedules that will allow them to provide additional cleaning during the school day. So, their job will certainly look different, their hours will look different, and their duties during the school day will look different to keep everything clean. Obviously, we will have signage everywhere about, and teaching about proper hand washing, and I like Dr. Dare's term respiratory etiquette. So, that means coughing into your elbow and sneezing into tissues and making sure that you're not breathing directly on people. We will have signage everywhere and, and organize lessons for students as we come back on proper hand sanitation throughout the day. Obviously, this can't be done without a discussion of what face shields look like in our district. Just so you know, we have ordered Bulldog themed face shields for our entire staff, multiple, multiple masks for our entire staff. We'll also receive face shields. There are times where clear shields are more appropriate than the masks so that students can see your mouth, read lips, and communicate better, so we will have face shields available also. Disposable masks will be available as needed for students and visitors. We are not yet ready to recommend to you as far as what's required where, what's encouraged where for staff and students. We will like to finalize that during the July, the second July meeting. We certainly have thoughts, the staff has thoughts, what they would like to see, what, the way that we've asked them is their thoughts. We are kinda defining two different spaces within our building. We're calling one area common areas. It's walking into school, moving through the hallways, going to the offices, between class passing periods, bathrooms, et cetera, where common, where people are moving. The second thing then, a recommendation will we have for, is what this will look like in classrooms when they're receiving instruction. Obviously, also the considerations will most likely, should, could be different depending on the age of the student and the age, for each building, the age of the student they serve. But we would like to finish that up, provide that to you at the July meeting with what we believe is appropriate. Health screenings. We will certainly need to work together as a community here, and this is parents, students, school staff, everyone, to ensure that if students are sick, if staff is sick, that they know the protocol is to stay home. We will provide a screening document that we would like parents to work through with their students every day before they, to send them to school, including some directions for a temperature check. We will have a recommendation for you, our ability to do temperature checks on almost 4,000 students on a daily basis and have enough equipment to do that and do it in a way that we aren't creating a bottleneck of people lined up together to get temperature checks. We are still working through if that is feasible for us or not. At a minimum, we will ask parents to do a temperature check. Obviously, we will monitor symptoms throughout the day in our classrooms. We will do the same thing for our staff, assess daily if they are healthy enough to come to work, including temperature checks. And I will tell you, this whole idea, we, we're gonna have to change our mindset on what school attendance means. You know, we've always stressed, you've gotta be in school, you need to be in school, you need to be there every day. We still believe that, but our new, our new thought is you need to be in school every day unless you are sick. If you are sick, do not come. This is where the partnership and the cooperation between parents, students, and school have to take place. We will revise our attendance policies. We are not giving out perfect attendance policies this year that would incentivize people to come to school when they should not. We, we will have to work through some issues with staff sick leave policies. MS, MSTA has sent some guidance on that that we're working through, but very much the mode of operation has to be every day you have to check, is my child healthy enough to send to school today? And if not, we ask that you will keep them home and we will, we will get them the work they need either in an online setting for the day or we'll get their homework, but we must have people who are under the weather staying home if this is to be successful. We will work with current health department guidance to make sure that we are following proper procedures for quarantine, quarantining those who show symptoms, who are, or who test positive for COVID, and also to be sure that we have procedures in place that we can do contact tracing should we get a positive case, that we need to trace who's been around them in close settings. What will food service look like? We have asked all the, we have two options. We can either serve all of our lunches directly in the classroom or we can rearrange the schedules, building schedules during the day to spread out the number of lunch shifts and spread out the time so that we can reduce numbers in the cafeteria to a level that we feel is safe to have kids come to the cafeteria. We are currently tasking principals with working on their schedules to see what they can, to see how much they can spread out, to see how low we can get those numbers. At that point, we'll be able to make a decision on what breakfast or lunch will look like. I will tell you, breakfast most likely will be served in the classroom, just as a standard basis. The real question is what are we able to do for lunch during the day? That comes with additional sanitizing procedures in the cafeteria and to make, if we are in the cafeteria, to make that process as safe as possible so that students aren't touching the same stations to get their condiments.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
So, how is it going as far as summer school goes? Because right now you are serving both lunch, right, breakfast and lunch?
We are serving both lunch and breakfast in the classrooms and it's working really well and all, we have a summer school presentation coming up, but the number of students that are attending is just far different than during the regular school year.
Is that lunch, is it a hot meal or is it?
It is not, which is part of the challenge here, is making sure that we get kids food that they like, that's nutritious and that they want to eat. Doing that in the classroom provides a challenge, not say it can't be done, but that does provide an additional challenge for us. Transportation is a big one. We are well aware that buses are essential to get many of our students to school. We will be encouraging anyone that can bring the students, bring their students to school on their own to please do so. Social distancing in our buses is going to be virtually impossible to be able to get six feet between students and still run bus routes to get kids to school. We will examine our bus routing options to see if we can double run routes or reorganize how we do it to reduce students on the bus. We will put some rules in place as far as who can sit together on a bus and try and limit it to family members or single seating when possible, but masking guidelines are gonna have to be talked about for what it means to be able to ride a bus. And we will have a recommendation for you, what we believe is necessary for that at the second July meeting. But again, I, I think there will be a difference between the number of riders in the AM, which I think more people will be able to get their students to school in the morning. I think we will see increased ridership in the PM when parents are working in order to get kids home. But we'll be asking parents about transportation and their needs, both AM and PM, so that we can get organized on that. But again, we will be strongly encouraging anyone that can bring their students to school, we would ask you to do so. Athletics and activities is a big concern for a lot of people. This presentation's been done for a couple of days here and just yesterday, we received guidance from Nisha, the Missouri State High School Activities Association, on what they believe is necessary to have a fall season. I guess I need to say that first thing, we are moving forward with plans for having a fall season. The Nisha guidance is they will allow teams to compete as long as schools are in session. Should we have to shut down and move to online learning, all activities related to Nisha will stop. So, again, all of our planning is trying to put in place a situation where we can open, stay open, provide the services that kids need, and do so for an entire year without needing to close down. So, the partnership between us and the community is very important. In the Nisha guidance is recommendations for screening and safety guidelines for participants in sports. I think it goes without saying though, if you're gonna play a sport, there are some sports where social distancing is not part of the equation and in fact, it, some collision sports, contact sports. Music and choir has some togetherness in it that is part of the program. So, again, we are moving forward, we think they will have to have some flexibility in scheduling. If we can play, can we play a full schedule? That's our hope, certainly our hope, but there maybe need to be some flexibility there throughout the season. Instructional guidance within the classroom. So, we're going to distance to the greatest extent possible in our classrooms. We're gonna spread desks in a configuration so that we eliminate students facing each other and talking. So, a lot of teachers will put their desks together in groups of four in pods so that people are facing each other. Obviously, we can't do that during this time. We're gonna go to traditional seating, kids facing one direction, not speaking to each other. At the elementary level, we do have some rooms with tables that we're gonna have to get creative on, but we will spread kids out in the classroom as far as they can. But we are considering the classroom, again, part of the cohort model. The children are gonna be around each other in a classroom. Our goal is to make sure that we limit the number of children that anyone is around during the day as much as we can, keep that cohort together and not have that cohort mixed with every other student in school. Okay? That's what we're doing during summer school. Numbers are small there, but it seems to be working well there and we'll try and institute that in our seated classes. Instructional strategies may change. We may rely on more whole group instruction and less on one-on-one instructions, sitting at a table, working with a student, although I think we can put some safety measures in place in classrooms that would allow that to take place if people are willing to follow our safety measure. I think we can make that happen. We will eliminate shared materials between students. I'll mention it during summer school, but every child will be lucky to have their, will be fortunate because they're gonna have their own set of crayons rather than a group set, a class set of crayons that they're all sharing. So, they'll have their own scissors and glue and, which will be nice. We are managing the sharing of technology by eliminating some of the students switching and teaming. We can assign one student to one device to use the entire day and eliminate the sharing of technology and touching. Again, I mentioned the cohort model already and then revised, that, I have revised curriculum up there, that's a bad term. We're not changing our curriculum, but we are revising the pacing of the learning objectives in each class and what we're gonna cover to make sure that we get gaps covered. Okay?
I know you're still working on the little details, but when you talk about shared materials, it just brings to mind the library and our AR program. That's a big part of our, you know, our younger kids learning up through the middle school and junior high. So, you have some ideas there?
We do have some ideas. We may have to frankly, limit the number of choices that students have, provide a classroom set of books for that classroom, when they're done, take them back, sanitize, trade them out to another class. But going to the library and looking at books, touching them, making a decision, that's gonna be tough, I would say. Yes, ma'am.
Recession?
I'm sorry, yes. So, during summer school, what we did was we scheduled recess. We were more intentional on scheduling recess time so that we could limit the number of students on the recess playground at any one time. We would do that during the school year as well. We're not taking away recess. Kids need to be outside being active, but we would be intentional about when and where a class is going to go to get outside for recess. All right? Just some closing thoughts here, then I'll take your questions and comments. As I mentioned before, we're trying to do everything we can to take care of people and their needs and to provide the feeling of safety and security that they need to be able to come back and learn. You can't learn if you're afraid all the time of being there. So, we're trying to put steps in place that make them comfortable being back in school so that we can get learning accomplished. Again, this will be a partnership. We need our community, the parents who send their children's back, children back to us to work hand-in-hand with us to make sure that we can provide the safest environment possible. Checking your child's health, taking their temperature, assessing if they're healthy enough, being willing to keep them home, times that you may have sent them to school thinking they'll probably be okay, doing all of that. Talking to your children about safe practices in school, distancing. I, I heard Dr. Mo, the chancellor at S&amp;T, speak yesterday and I really like, he had the minor pledge, and we might steal this quite frankly, because I really liked it, and get our student councils involved in making this something for our kids. But the minor pledge had three parts, protect myself, talking about the things that you can do to stay healthy and, and hand sanitize and steps you can take to stay healthy. That's part one. Part two, protect my campus. Things that you can do to protect the other people who you share a campus with, with face coverings and staying home when you're sick and respecting other people's space with social distancing. The final part is respecting my community and that's leading by example in how you carry yourself in the building, supporting others' attempts to try and stay healthy and only limiting yourself to those essential activities that have to take place. So, I, I really like the minor pledge and trying to figure out, I don't think we can just steal it and call it the Bulldog pledge, but I think we need to come up with something and make it our own, but protect myself, protect my campus, protect my community. That's gonna have to be the mindset that we come into this with. If we're gonna be able to be successful, has a, have a positive learning environment and have it take root for the entire school year. So, those are my thoughts. Obviously, this is not a completely finished plan. Again, these are our thoughts. We're still working on some of the big rocks and some of the finer details to present to you and ask for your approval at a second meeting in July and also involve you as part of that work-study session to allow you to, to look at our recommendations and make any changes that you feel are necessary. So, be happy to take any questions or comments about what we've discussed tonight.
Going back to athletics?
Yes, sir.
And Nisha, did they have any plans for fans?
Yeah, so, Nisha defines three tiers of groups that can attend games. So, tier one is obviously security, participants, coaches, trainers, that kind of thing. Tier two is media. So, RD, you make the cut there. Tier three are spectators and parents and families. What they are recommending is that if your community has any type of limitations on group gatherings, that only tier one and tier two would be allowed to attend, that tier three would only be allowed to attend. In other words, spectators and parents, should your community and area not have those limitations on the size of gatherings. So, we would have to wait and see when contests start to see what conditions are here, what kind of COVID numbers we are seeing in our community to decide which tiers that we would allow to attend.
Thank you.
I will say, my daughter played today in the licking shootout and the parents, spectators could attend, but was required to wear a mask.
Mm-hmm.
And they did limit the, the number of participants, people in the building.
So, the folks that run the licking shootouts have cut the number of participants way down and have shrunk the area from which they're allowing teams to come in. And at some locations, masks are required, at others, masks are encouraged. It depends on the location you're in, but yeah. I'll be going tomorrow and Saturday, so I'll, I'll be there. Other thoughts or questions? So, our plan, just to be clear, Gina and I plan to send out an announcement to all of our families tomorrow, formally announcing the ability to return to seated or select online classes and let them know what the process will look like for them to let us know what their choice is. We probably didn't present enough information for everyone to make that decision tonight, so certainly as Julie, Dr. Williams, sorry, finishes up the work on the tools that we will use, we will have that available as well and be happy to visit with parents who have questions. Okay?
I just had a question.
Yes, sir.
For the online learning, does it all mean Google Classroom or?
No, we are looking at, so, Google Classroom is one tool that we may use. We are actually looking at purchasing licenses for online instructional program that our teachers will help facilitate and monitor student progress.
Okay. I know they tried Google Meet this last, for this last semester.
Google Meet would be more of a tool for not necessarily receiving instruction, but to communicate with teachers for those needing assistance.
And what about? And what about like any face-to-face time and that online learning part at all?
So I didn't mention tonight because I'm not sure that we'll be able to have the equipment to make it so, but as far as synchronous learning and having students be able to watch teachers teach, is that what you're referring to or something different?
Yeah, part of that and if the student needs to meet with the teacher. My son's taking my first time in high school, so.
So I'm going to repeat your question. They're pointing me at the back, obviously, the, the community can't hear your question. So the gentleman is asking about the ability that should a student take an online class, would we be able to offer any type of face-to-face assistance from a teacher should they need help with, with the material? And whether we did that through a Google Meet or through a in-person meeting, you know, we haven't talked about in-person meetings, but I don't see why we couldn't figure that out. That would certainly seem appropriate. What we don't want to do is give the impression that we're simply cutting kids loose onto an online world and good luck. It's our responsibility to support, to monitor, to help kids through that process and be successful. So we need, we will figure out what we need to do to help kids get there. Anything else? Okay. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
While you're up there.
You want me to just stay?
We'll move on to item B, health insurance update and rate approval. And you're filling in tonight for? Dr. Dare?
So I am filling in for Dr. Dare and Kendra, Mrs. Atkinson, sorry, tonight. So do you want to talk with you about our recommendation for our health insurance rates? Before I start, just a quick, I guess, reminder. In the budget that we passed on June 30th, we did budget for a 7% increase in our health insurance rates. I'm going to propose tonight something less than that, but I did want to just call your attention. That's what we had budgeted for was a 7% increase. Okay? All right, first, a little overview and history of our program. We became self-funded for certificated staff in 1993, meaning that we collect our insurance premiums, put them in a pool to cover the expenses, health expenses of our employees as related to their insurance needs. In 2007, we brought support staff into that same plan. The board pays 90% of the support staff members' base insurance rate, and they do have the choice as to whether they want to participate or not. A little history on premium increases recently. In 2017, we raised rates by 10%. 2018 saw a 5% increase and 2019 saw a 5% increase. That's just for historical, historical look there. Overall, since we've gone to the self-funded plan, it has been very good to the district. It's been very efficient. We went many years without a rate increase, but increases in the cost of healthcare in the fa, in the last few years has forced us to react and raise the amount of contribution that we're putting in. But I would not recommend that we do anything different. The self-funded has been very good for our district. A little bit about the program. Dr. Dare and Mrs. Atkinson meet regularly with Tanya Greven of Barker Phillips Jackson BPJ to review how much the plan is being used, to review the high-cost claims that are put, that, that come in to our program, and also very importantly, review our fund balance. That fund balance is there, again, to pay the insurance cost of claims of employees, so keeping an eye on what that fund balance is over time. We do provide education programs for our employees at the back-to-school presentation by BPJ where they try to educate our employees about making good choices when it comes to your healthcare and how it impacts the entire system for all the employees in the district. I keep hitting the button there. We have a lot of information about our insurance on our district staff webpage, and Dr. Dare regularly shares out the information emails from UMR regarding health and wellness and ways that staff members can assist us in making sure that our plan is strong. For your knowledge, we have three benefit options in our plan, and you, I believe Myra gave you in your packet a handout describing those. Our base plan is a 70/30 with a $2,000 deductible. Employees can choose, can choose to pay an additional premium for a buy-up, a little richer plan, 80/20 with a $1,500 deductible. And then we also have the high deductible, HSA, Health Savings Account. The district does contribute $60 a month to each employee who has chosen this, and then the employee will choose how much monthly they wish to put into their Health Savings Account, 80/20 with a higher deductible, $2,600. And you do have the handout there that has more details about each of those plans. Additional resources we have available, we do have the Teladoc so that staff and family can access doctors via phone, video, or mobile apps 24 hours a day. Employee Assistance Program to help employees with needs that they have with mental or physical, excuse me, health. And then an online enrollment tool where employees can go in and set up the, the programs in which they would like to participate on their own. And it's pretty, pretty straightforward, pretty slick interface that they have there. We also participate in a health and wellness program in which we receive funds to educate our staff and provide some services for them. You see some options listed there. This year, we have received tentative approval, since we weren't able to do some of the things scheduled last year due to the closure, to use those money, to use some of those funds to purchase additional bottle, bottle filler units in our buildings to provide safe drinking water for our students when we reopen. So we believe we have full permission to do that, and we'll be adding some new units to our buildings. Usage information about our plan from October 1st to May 31st, 2020. Total claims during that time period were $4.4 million. The discount applied to those because of our involvement with UMR was $2.3 million. Was taken off, off the top, 55.8%. The amount paid by employees through deductibles, co-insurance, and copays was a little over $437,000. The remainder of that amount was paid for out of our reserve fund, right around $1.6 million paid out, out of the reserve fund. Our summary and our recommendation in FY '20, the board paid rate for all certificated staff was $678 a month. Our fund balance as of June 30th was $2.82 million. That was up $600,000 since October 1st, but still lags behind the level that we believe is optimal to have in the reserve fund. $35,000 of that was due to a one-time implementation credit as we switched over our insurance carrier last year. Our recommendation now is to approve a 3% increase for FY '21, raising the board paid amount from $678 to $700 per employee. I'll mention once again, we did budget for a 7% increase. So this does, coming in at 3% is a positive. It's still an increase, but better than budgeted. And just as a reminder, what does that cost? I'm going to look at the next page here. This is an idea, and it's hard to read, but I'll tell you what it says there. So what does this mean? It means the board contribution will increase for the base plan by $22. There is no increase for employees as their health insurance is fully board paid. For support staff, since the board pays 90% of their premium, it is a $2.20 monthly increase in their insurance premium for the base plan. And you can see as you go up and elect to cover others in your family or for the buy-up plan, it does increase the cost for the employees should they wish to participate in those plans. But the amounts are there as far as the monthly increase that this 3% insurance increase would result. Questions about anything insurance-related? Jimmy, you look like you're itching to ask a question.
Well, I did, how to say it, you know, looking at that final sheet that was shared with us, pretty impactful based upon that we only gave movement on the schedule. That eats it all up for the average person, so.
That's not, so.
We're mindful of that, but we've got to keep a, a positive balance in our, in our account.
Yeah, we are always hesitant to increase insurance such that it impacts negatively the take-home pay from the previous year as compared to this year. And since we did give steps and no base increase, there will be some where this should, depending on what they pay, will impact that. You are right. We kept this. I know Mrs. Atkinson, Dr. Dare worked a lot with BPJ, trying to zero in on just what was needed. And I'm thankful, at least they came in, in less than budgeted, but, but it is an increase. There, there's no getting around that.
And for newcomers, at least two times in the last three years, we've had to supplement the balances at the end of the year because of the drawdown. So we, in effect, subsidize that, those programs.
Just to keep the reserve fund at a level that was safe for the district to be able to meet our needs.
Yep.
So we'd like to just make the recommendation that we approve the 3% increase in the health insurance plan.
Okay. I need a motion to that effect. Okay, thank you, Sue. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A motion carried. We'll move on to item C, Board Member Resignation. So the board will discuss the process for replacing a board member who is resigning due to relocating. Well, we'll start there first. So Shannon's going to be leaving us, and her resignation letter is on page 28. She's going to be relocating at the end of the month. So I'm sorry you're leaving, Shannon.
I'm sad to be leaving. It's definitely been an honor to serve the families of this district, and I regret leaving before my term is up, but my husband's job is moving us to Salt Lake City. And so we're going, but I'll keep this district in my prayers and good luck with all the exciting projects coming up.
You'll have to come back for some ribbon cutting.
I know. I, I said I have a niece and nephew who are still Raleigh Bulldogs, so I'm excited to hear from them, how things are going, and looking forward to seeing them perform in the new auditorium and play in the new gym, and so it'll be an exciting time.
Well, you've been an asset while you've been here.
Yeah, I just want to, on behalf of our entire staff, just thank you for your service. The perspective that you brought to the board was really valuable because you bring a deep caring for our students and for our district, and we really appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I just, I appreciate our friendship outside the board as well. We've had some good conversations since we've both been on the board, so I kind of miss you.
Thank you.
So we're covered under Board Policy BBE-1. So first, I need to declare that we have a vacancy on the board. And this policy dictates how, I'm going to read a few things from the policy. So if a vacancy occurs on the Board of Education, the remaining member shall appoint a person to serve until the next school term election, when a director shall be elected for the unexpired term. So Shannon's got a year and three-quarters left on her term. So next April, we'll have an election for the last year of the term. What?
We need to make a motion too, to accept her resignation.
We can, but it doesn't say that in the policy.
It was listed as an action item, so.
Well, the action item is to get it, get the process, so.
Oh, that's fine.
It just, it just states to declare it. So that it's there. So we cannot accept it and make her stay.
Can I make a motion or?
I had a motion written up, and then I reread the policy, so I don't, I don't know that we need a motion for that. So it says, the fact that a vacancy exists or will exist will be announced at a board meeting. The district will notify local newspapers and advertise existing vacancies on the district's website. So residents who wish to be appointed to the vacancy shall apply as directed in the notification. So this is what we're, we're going to need to approve the notification and approve that it be posted. And the district will allow residents a minimum of two weeks from the date the district publicizes the vacancy to, on its website, to apply for the vacant position. So we've got to allow two weeks. And then there's a review process, which we don't, and probably will not decide tonight, but all applications received will be reviewed by the Board of Education at a regularly scheduled board meeting or at a special meeting called for that purpose. And the board may select final candidate, candidates to interview in open session, or the board may decide not to interview candidates and make a final selection for the applicants. That is also in an open session. And so that's, that's the portion of the policy that I want to state, so.
So Gina, are we ready to post that tomorrow or Monday, which is?
I thought we decided Monday.
Okay. Our plan is to post that Monday.
Right, and so.
Which was a 14-day process then?
Yeah, so in the front of your binder, there was a suggested information sheet, which Carla and I were given an opportunity to review. So we're real, really just asking for information about the candidate that's, that's interested, why they have an interest in joining the Board of Education, and listing their experience or qualifications. So I don't know if any of the other members have any other ideas, so. All right?
So our plan is to describe the process, that they would come to the Heritage Central Office to Myra and would sign up, just as they do if you were going to run for board, and she will have a sign-up sheet, provide them with this application that they either, either complete there or take home and complete and bring back, and that she would then get those to, to you.
Okay. Can I suggest that we get this information sheet in with the notification or a link to it so they can complete it and just make one trip in?
That'd be great.
And so they, they return it and, and sign it that way.
Okay.
I don't know, we need a, do we need them to come in? I'm just looking at, trying to reduce the amount of traffic into the office, do this electronically?
I think we can certainly do an electronic application process. We will, when we get one, I think we'll probably call, reach out, and just verify their interest, just, just to know who it is that we're getting it from. But I think we could do it without them needing to come into Central Office, so, yeah.
So by timing-wise, you're looking at choosing someone by the 13th or bringing them in to interview by the 13th?
I think if we have the, we're going to have to discuss the action process that we're going to take, whether we're going to, and we have to determine that. And I would suggest doing that July 30th. We won't have all the applications at that time, but we can determine that process that we want to use, whether we want to interview or whether we're going to select from the applications.
We'll need a couple additional days beyond the 30th to meet our 14 days, but we'll.
Yeah, well, we won't, yeah, we won't have a, a final list by that time, but we will, we can discuss it, and that'll give everybody two weeks to, to think about. Okay? Now I'm ready for that motion, if you want to move that we proceed with.
Make a motion that we proceed with filling Shannon's resigning position following Policy BBE, right? Dash one.
Right.
Second. Did I get it all in there?
Right. Okay? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that carried, and then again, we'll, we'll discuss the review and interview process that we're going to take. The board has the option of choosing the solution that they want to use for that policy, so. All right. We are now in Board of Education Future Issues. So our next board meetings are, as listed, are August the 13th and September 3rd and 17th. We have talked about a potential meeting date of two weeks from tonight, Thursday, July 30th, 2020, at 5:30? Time?
Same bat time?
Hmm? Excuse me?
Same bat time, same bat channel? He can't hear.
I, I understand. It's not the same bat time, but we're not going to have a closed session.
Okay.
Or we may have some closed, we will have some closed session items to discuss that.
All right. So we're going to start at 5:00 or 5:30?
Just leave it at that sweet normal, right?
It'd be normal. Okay. And we don't know where we'll meet yet, if it's going to be here or upstairs. It'll be a work session, a meeting, so I need a motion to add that meeting to our calendars.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Carla.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. Any other discussion? We pick the evening because that's when Brian would be available. He wasn't going to be available in the morning. So we definitely want him to be able to attend. We need to have a vote, yes. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. All right, we'll go on to old business. We'll ask Gina Zervos to come down and give us a communication program update. Oh, it needs special.
Save RD from taking notes over there. All right. Nope, just the button. Just hit the button that says present. Yep. Yep, and then hit that. Yep, perfect. All right. Thank you all so much for adding me to the agenda tonight. I know there is plenty to discuss, lots going on. But of course, communications is always intertwined in everything that we do. So just to start off, I want to remind you how much I love my job. Even on days when it's hard and messy, I love getting up and sharing all the good things that we do here. And I hope that's evident in some of the work I'm going to share with you tonight, so. Maybe? I, Craig turned it off. No, I broke it.
If you just hit the spacebar.
Yes.
Oh, no. Please hold for technical difficulties. Try page down, Myra. Is that helpful? On your keyboard? Try, try page down on your keyboard. Okay, you'll have to pause it because you put it in autoplay. Just hit page down. No, no! There you go. Okay. We're going to start here with some of our current channels of communication. The list is quite a bit larger than it was last year. So as you probably know, we launched the new district website, and I should comment that it's not truly just one website. It is nine different websites, and I'm going to talk more in detail about that here in just a moment. But we launched the new district website, ralla31.org, and the companion custom app last August. It's been a huge success and truly was a timely addition to our communication toolbox. It's been a really outstanding tool in sharing information with our parents, our students, our community over the last couple of months. And again, I'm going to come back to that one here shortly, but just wanted to remind you that we're nearing the one-year mark with that, and everything's going really well. By far, our most popular social media channel is Facebook, and I have some stats to share with you on that here in just a moment. That's primarily where we connect with the parents of our district. And again, I'll share some stats. Instagram, fairly new to the district's communications toolbox, and it's been up and running for about two years. Twitter is where we reach a lot of our teachers and alumni, as well as some of our high school students. And then on the top right, that icon represents School Messenger. So that's our mass communication system. And as a reminder, that's the same company that houses our web presence and our custom mobile app. I will tell you that being involved with our customer service has been a really great experience, and we made the right choice going with that company. They are top-notch, they're quick to respond, they've sorted out every issue we've had, which truly haven't been that many. Their delivery is just really excellent, and I'm proud to be partnered with them. Of course, we have great partnerships with local radio, and our newspaper connections with both Phelps County Focus and Ralla Daily News are still standing strong. We spend a lot of time at, in the booth at Results Radio on the Morning Mayor Show. Mr. Hanson got to go for his first time with me two weeks ago, and it's always a lot of fun. You never know what you're going to get. So we enjoy visiting with those guys and reaching a different segment of the community through that show. I'm going to come back to some of these other ones here in just a second. YouTube has expanded a little bit this year, and then finally on the bottom right, that's Peach Jar. And if you recall, there was a lot of discussion about Peach Jar, and we kept calling it Peach Tree when we were launching the website last year. This is, this is our centralized digital flyer service that is housed on our website. This flyer service delivers flyers of all types to our families, directly emails them to both families and staff. And it's just a really great tool. We've had some good success with it. So we can not only add our own information, make it building-specific, so send just certain flyers to just certain buildings. But there's also a call-to-action feature, which has been really well-received by our families. So we can add a button there on those flyers. So say I get one from Truman Elementary, and there's an option to sign up for an event. I can click right there on the call-to-action button on my phone and sign up for that event there on the spot. So it eliminates all that paper traffic. We're not spending time separating into teachers' mailboxes. The teachers aren't having the hassle of putting flyers into backpacks anymore. They're not getting used as paper airplanes on the school bus. So we've cut down on a lot of that paper traffic and really streamlined that process, and again, that's going very well, so. And then, of course, Channel 16 is not on there, but we, we have a wonderful partnership with Channel 16, and I'm going to discuss that more here in just a minute. So by now, I know you've all had a chance to look over the results from our recent Patron Insight survey, and I just wanted to bring this one piece in as the cornerstone of the planning process here. Of course, we care about where our families are getting their information and how they want to receive messages from us. Maybe surprisingly, one of the big trends in digital communications right now is that people are gravitating back toward email, where they sort of stepped away for a while, feeling like email was a little older and more antiquated. People really like getting stuff via email now, as opposed to having to go and search for it, or maybe look on the website or another method. So you can see there, people reported that they received, 66% of people recalled getting communication from us via text message and 90% via email, and those were the top two preferred way as well. I will point out, however, that those text messages linked our families back to the website. And I noticed, I read all the comments too, Jim. I noticed that in a few of the comments, people pointed out that they didn't necessarily love clicking on a link within their text to go to the website. And there's actually a reason for that. We're limited on the characters that we send in a text. So some of these longer announcements just don't fit. There are 165 characters allowed. That's about two solid sentences, so it's not very much. And that's also why we use the Bitly links. They're short and they fit. This is probab, this probably goes back a few years when they set the system up, when people were being charged for each individual text. And a really long message would turn into three, four, 10 text messages, and you get charged for each one. So for the most part, that's no longer the case. However, the system is still set up the same way. So just for folks watching at home, if that was a question you had, like, why do I get a text that has a link in it? That's why. That will probably continue to be the case. So I'm sorry. Just open your email if you don't want to click on the text or the link within the text, so. I feel really positive about the, the communications part of this survey. I mean, all of it, of course, but in looking specifically at the communications response and how we did, I feel like it was really well-received by the community. They knew where to look, they knew what to expect. And the frequency and the accessibility of those communications was, was, was noticed, so I'm pleased there. So I mentioned to you earlier that I would come back to the website and discuss a little bit. This is just kind of a live or a screen capture that I did on the website, so you can see some of the features, and hopefully it doesn't go too fast. As I mentioned, it's truly nine websites. It's a district website, so sort of an umbrella website. Seven buildings or seven different schools. RTI and RTC are combined into one site. And then Athletics also has its own site. So if you've not spent much time exploring the nine different websites, I hope that you do so. They're all in that dropdown right there, and you can find each one of them and go poke around. They all look the same. They all have very similar quick links. Many of them point you back to one spot. So for example, the principal calendar, it all points to one, so that when we update them, we're updating one, and they all, when you push the button, they all go back to this right here. So that's what you see when you push the principal calendar on every single website. So Ginger King, Technology Director, and I spent a long time last summer going through our old website, packing up the boxes, figuring out what was still relevant, what needed to be migrated over, and School Messenger did that for us, of course. And then what needed to be cut so that we could start with a solid foundation and build fresh new content. I'm really pleased with the outcome. We focused heavily on those things that parents and students and community members look for on our website. What do they really want to know when they go there? Things like lunch menus, calendar, athletics, all of those hot-button topics that are frequently visited. And we tried to place those as obviously as we could on the homepage. We tried to place those front and center. So as you can see, that scrolling calendar, it just flipped the page to Peach Jar. But there are all of our Peach Jar sites, and all of our social and Peach Jar icons are over to the right-hand side, really easily accessible. I will point out that Instagram is not there. There's no, they don't make a button for Instagram yet, and it's an Instagram thing. It's not a School Messenger thing, so I don't, I don't know. Maybe we'll get there. Another piece that's been a prominent player in this new website is the Contact Us button. On each of the nine websites, on the bottom right in the Quick Links row, there's a button that you can click to hit, that says Contact Us. It auto-generates an email that goes to webmaster@rolla31.org. All of those are directed to my inbox. Yay! But it's great because a lot of people are using it. I went back and did just a ballpark, and we get about 40 of those a month from the nine different sites. And so from there, if I can answer their question, I do, and if I can't, then I pass them on to whomever can help them. So it's just been another great way for people to connect with us. This is just from the homepage from ralla31.org. These are the top 30 popular searches. And again, they are probably exactly what you would expect. Some of the heavy hitters are not as prominent on there, just because we did do such a good job, I feel, of placing those items front and center where they're easy to find. These look a little bit different at the building level, and I didn't want to put all those in here because it's a lot. But for example, AR is searched frequently at the elementary buildings, and that's not something that people normally search on the district website. But most of those topics are right in line with what you would expect. Just a few comments about the communication efforts that went into the R31 2020 Bond Issue Campaign. The, this election, more than ever, social media was our friend and greatest asset. We were able to reach a whole lot of people with no investment and engage in real conversations with people in the community. So this helped in a lot of ways, but specifically to clarify issues and address concerns over what was a fairly complex issue regarding five projects in multiple areas of the district. So here, we have one of the Animoto videos that I created just to help people learn about the projects. There was one done on each one, and then a few overarching. So in addition to these fun videos, there was also a solid package of print material to help people learn and answer some of those FAQs and help get the word out. So the, the goal really here was to create a steady stream of easily digestible information. And that coupled with the really dynamic campaign committee and community members led to a successful outcome, of course, in early June. And I'm really excited to continue these efforts on our website as we turn plans into progress and construction. So there was a dedicated page, or there still is a dedicated page to R31 2020. That page is in the process of being transformed to What Happens Next. So folks will still be able to visit our website and view those progressions as they, as they happen. I promised I'd come back to Facebook briefly, so here we are. A few things about our Facebook page. Our follow, our followers have grown about 60% in the last two years. Those are pretty exciting numbers. About 2,200 folks have gone and hit like on our page. That's, that's a nice clip. 56% of our viewers are women ages 25 to 54. We tend to pick up the under 24 crowd on Instagram. So that's who's watching, and as in all successful communication, the first, first point of order is to know your audience, so that's who we're talking to. Just some fun screenshots and stats on some of our more successful posts over the last couple of months. The top left is Grab and Go Meals, our meal services. People were really excited to share that and comment and, you know, share their gratitude and excitement for this service. On the bottom left is just one of our announcements, I think mid-March, if you can see that far. Top right is when the Athletics Department lit up the football field for the seniors. And the bottom right is just a, just an encouraging message to families that was really well-received during the time of closure, and people were dealing with a lot of uncertainty. So just like all of our channels, it's a great way to engage with the community and gather feedback. A couple comments about our Instagram page. There's some screenshots there on the left. You can see the difference in followers between summer of last year and last week. So we've added about 700 followers on that page. It continues to grow. A lot of our students join us here and, and comment on, on our posts. So here are just a few examples. The one in the middle is a conglomeration. We have Mr. Bridgman in the middle right, and then on the far right is Dr. Welch at Truman, getting wrapped in toilet paper by one of her students. I can't remember what they won, but it was something, that was their prize. They got to make her a snowman. Yes. Yeah, that was last winter sometime. I'm not sure exactly. Yeah, I bet she would like to build a snowman right now. A fun addition to our YouTube channel, we actually added a YouTube channel this year. This is our Bulldog Athletics page. This has been really exciting and fun. The Athletics Department added a huddle camera in the main high school gym, and so we've been able to livestream any sports that are played in that high school gym on YouTube. So truly, anyone can watch them from anywhere. So I feel like this is going to be especially useful for us in the coming months. And just a fantastic tool to have in place where we can share the accomplishments of our students with people that would, maybe wouldn't be able to be there live and in person.
I saw that you got a lot of good feedback.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. And if you haven't checked it out, I encourage you to do so. It's really fun to watch the camera actually move, so it's not just a static view. It has some motion sensor. It'll follow the ball down the court. You know, cheerleaders come out, it kind of zooms in on them. So, so it's a really neat thing to watch. And we can also share these on our social media as well, so that people can pick up on them. So if you've not subscribed, I encourage you to do so. That way you'll get notifications when we go live. I've heard rumors that there may be another one of these coming for outdoor use. I cannot confirm or deny, but I think it would be awesome if we did that. So that's all I'm going to say.
Which, by the way, is one of the mission recommendations, is to provide live streaming for fans.
We can just go ahead and check that box. I love it.
Reducing attendance.
Okay.
That is one of the recommendations.
It's nice to.
Yeah, you can get a drone.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. My son has one. He's eight. He might let me borrow it. These are just a few clips from publications from the Phelps County Focus. The Focus has been kind enough to allow me in as a guest author, so I write a bi-weekly column for them. It's been really well-received. I've had strangers stop me in the grocery store and say, hey, I read your column. So people are reading it, and it's. So people are reading it and it's topic of our choice, so we're able to select the news that we feel is the most important, that we want to send out to their readership and, and connect with those folks there as well. On the right, this is the brand new, I, the ink's not even dry on it yet. This is the back to school guide, our fall district magazine that we print every year. And again, the Focus has been kind enough to partner with us on this. It will go to print, I believe, the 28th. So watch in your newspapers for that. If you didn't get one, or if you don't get one, and you have, maybe have a business or, you know, someplace where you have newcomers, let me know. I'd be happy to deliver some. You can call my office and, and I'll take care of that for you. This is, this publication we designed to be relevant throughout the entire school year and it's not just for current district families. It's got great information in it for those who are looking at our community as a place where they want to reside. So had a lot of fun making that and appreciate the partnership with, with the Focus on that project.
Yeah, we could definitely use some of those at the hospital.
Yeah.
When we're recruiting new providers.
Okay. Well, I will have a lot of them, so I'll bring you some. Not quite as many as last year. I think we, I ordered too many last year, but absolutely. So I'm going to pause just for a second before I get into the plan and see if you have any questions or comments on just some of those highlights from this past year.
I think one of the comments I just want to make is I, I love the fact that you're very quick at getting things out, especially like on Facebook.
Thank you.
So that it can get shared.
Thank you. Timeliness is certainly important, something, that's feedback that we've gotten from our community as well.
And I would agree with your comments. Kudos to you for the patron insight comment. I think that's a direct reflection on your work in the district, the types of scores that the district receives. So kudos to you for that. Much appreciated.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay. So a lot of this will look similar to last year, this page in particular. The district mission beliefs and goals remain the same. So does the communications mission statement. Just, just to note here that I really use that as the cornerstone of not only my planning process, but in my decision-making processes, if I'm deciding to add something to my list or take something off, how does it serve this mission statement? And it doesn't grow the program, does it serve the district? Does it fall into one of these categories? And if it doesn't, it has to go. Again, much of this remains the same as last year's plans. I added a few audience subgroups based on your recommendations from last year. Number six under communication goals, however, is new. Just to point out that we, when we implemented the new websites, we also signed on with a service called Monsito. And Monsito helps us monitor the ADA compliance, broken links, misspellings. There, there is a, there is a myriad of reports you can run within Monsito. You can look at just about everything. But I get a weekly email from Monsito and it tells me, hey, these are the things that you need to fix, or these are the things that aren't quite right, or this isn't ADA compliant and it has to be. So that's been a really fantastic addition in helping monitor those websites. The building secretaries and, you know, some of the principals have really gotten on board with this new, with the new websites and using it as their preferred communication tool. So that's been really exciting to watch them curate their own content or even just pass it on to me and ask me to help them post it. So that's been, that's been a lot of fun. I would also point out under the metrics, which, all of which remain the same from last year, we did not have our committee meeting this year just because this year was wild. I don't know. There's really no other way to say it. I would like to put a group back together this fall. But in the interim, we had the surveys to rely on and we're able to use community and parent and staff voices as expressed on those surveys instead of the live group meetings. Also just a few additions here from last year based on your recommendation. In partnership with Channel 16, we've begun slideshow ads through the day. So they are kind enough to allow me to create really whatever I want district-related and drop it into a folder that they access and pull and run throughout the day. So it's everything from job postings to public notices to good news that we want to share, any technology updates, or really any information that we have that we want to get out to the public. So that's been new. The Chamber Guest Blog is also new. This is a quarterly piece on current topic of our choice and reaches a whole different audience. So the Chamber of Membership, excuse me, is currently about 500 businesses, but there are many, many folks within those businesses that receive the emails from the Chamber. So I think the last time they told me it was an estimated reach of about 3,000 via email. So again, maybe just a whole new group of folks that might not get communications from others, from us otherwise. And briefly on interpersonal visits, I, I think the perception surrounding the topic of communications is always that it's like a letter, an article, or a speech, you know, something crafted in advance. And that's certainly true in much of our messages. But one of the most important pieces of my job and really our, all of our jobs here in the district is the human connection. So those conversations about schools in person, the small group discussion, it's social service groups where people can really ask you questions personally and not in a text box or over a chat. Those are the moments when we build trust in our community and add faces to names, proving that we're people within a district here serving our families every day and not just the district as a conglomerate, you know, that we are the, we are the people that support So a few items under C SIP Goal One, increasing the number of families and community members volunteering. We don't yet know exactly what that will look like going into the fall semester, but looking back over the past year, I would point out that we added a Bravo Facebook group to engage those volunteers and help add some timeliness to those volunteer assignments. Prior to that, it was working from a spreadsheet and picking up the phone, making phone calls or individual emails and hoping that you might be able to find someone to help a teacher in need, especially if it was an immediate request or a student with specific needs. For example, last year we had a kindergarten student incoming that spoke no English and we needed to help find someone that could help her on a continual basis. And we were lucky enough to find one of our volunteers that could spend a lot of time with the student and, and help her through that transition of coming to school. And so in being able to reach all of our volunteers or all who participate in the platform all at once, it was a pretty easy call to action. All I had to do was make a post in there and about an hour later, someone commented and said, I can do that. So that's been a very handy tool. I, I would tell you that we have about 130 registered volunteers last school year. It was up about 25 from previous years. And there's about a core group of 50 within that. That's not counting our chaperones. So that's an entirely different list. There's some overlap there, but I would have to refer to Mrs. Schweiss in HR to find out that she manages that list. And then the second arrow that I placed there was to point out promoting early childhood programs. Mrs. Brown and I have been in contact about creating a video for incoming kindergarteners since they didn't get the usual screening experience. And so we're going to put our heads together and work on that so our, our kids will have at least some friendly faces to put with names and some preconception of the buildings, the hallways, that sort of thing. So we'll be able to give that out to those families. And certainly not to skip anything or minimize anything, I just kind of pulled the highlights. I didn't want to get you in the weeds of the day-to-day operations of my office, but please stop me at any time and ask any questions about any of the points. Okay. The arrow at the bottom of this page refers to Peachjar, creating that centralized flyer location. We've already discussed that. But again, I, I'm really excited about the way that's going and I'm really interested to see how that grows over the coming year. And then finally, on this last page, just a few points. Teacher's Corner also falls under my umbrella. And if you're not familiar with Teacher's Corner, it is the volunteer centralized, centralized donation site. It's a store for teachers that we house. And teachers can go in there and, and donate items they no longer need from their classroom. We have local businesses that participate in this, many of them actually, and you never know what you're going to find in there. If you have not been, please go and look because there's a lot of stuff in there and all of it's really great. So teachers can utilize that to find items for their classroom and again, repurpose those items they're no longer using. So upon requests from some of our district teachers, they've been asking for a virtual counterpart to that. And I just got that set up a few weeks ago. So we now have a Teacher's Corner Virtual Exchange Facebook group under the district Facebook page as an umbrella. And it's, it's been really well received so far. I'm hopeful that it will minimize some of the contact that teachers are having with each other, maybe just limiting their trips and getting out and donating those things and going to, you know, shop at Teacher's Corner where they can just exchange with one another and simplify that a little bit, save them some time too. And that brings us to the end of the plan. I know I breezed through the plan itself, but again, want to respect your time, so I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Questions for Gina?
I have a question. I was just going to say Gina, I really appreciate how everything is uniform, everything is aligned. When I open Instagram or I open Facebook or open the webpage, I'm going to see the same quality, the same way. It's sorted the same. I, I just, I really appreciate that.
Well, thank you. One of the first tasks that I took on in eight, in 2018, this is my two-year anniversary week, just so you all know. There should probably be cake. But one of the first tasks that I took on in this position was to streamline the branding. And so I really appreciate you pointing that out. It's been a lot of moving parts, but I think we're kind of there. So, thank you.
I just downloaded the app, it wasn't really that much.
Fantastic.
It's awesome stuff on it already.
Very good, yes. And if you're watching at home and you don't have the Rala Public Schools app, it's free. It's in the Google Play Store in your Apple App Store. It probably took you about 30 seconds to download. It's deep linked to our website and it's a great way to receive notifications, especially if you're not a parent or guardian who's able to sign up for our school messenger notice, mass notifications. You can still receive information on things like school closures through our app. Very good. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will go on to item B under Old Business, Long Range Facility and Program Update. Mr. Housen will fill in for Dr. Dare and discuss the architect's field study.
So Gina mentioned our thankfulness on the passage of the R31 2020 issue. So again, thank you to the community of Rala. Just an update of some things going on. Dr. Dare did meet with our architects in late June to discuss the timelines, scope and sequence, design processes, next steps to undertake. They are already engaged with our local firms here on surveying and elevation work. They've already secured engineering firms for that, they're part of the design process. So things are moving. We are foreseeing five bid packages for these products, or for the projects. The first is for the total high school gymnasium conversion to the performing arts center. Probably going to bid that as one project so that we have one contractor onsite doing all of that work for some consistency. That, that project would also include the safety updates to RHS and the security entry improvements there as well. So that would be one package together. The other would be at the junior high, new band and choir rooms and security upgrades. Third would be at RTI, the restroom renovations, classroom and lab reconfigurations, updates, security entrance and security upgrades. Fourth package would be at Truman Elementary for their library and secure entry and security upgrades. And then finally, a package mixed together for Mark Twain, Wyman Middle School and RCT, or RTC for all of their security upgrades as well. So we will look at the potential of five different project packets going out. I would say the high school project will obviously take the longest and is the most involved. Some of the other projects aren't quite as large and we may be able to put those out to bid a little bit earlier. But obviously the work needed to be done at the high school will make that a pretty large project. Next steps will be for Honer and Associates to come to Rala and meet with the stakeholders for each one of these projects, the people that will be using it to get their input into the design process and all of the components that need to be a part of those new rooms to make sure that we do them right. We expect them to be here in late July and early August, hopefully to begin that process. So things are underway. We hope to make some positive momentum, hopefully at the end of this month or beginning of the next month, as far as meeting with those folks and getting some ideas. But that's kind of where we stand right now.
Something that Dr. Dare mentioned at our June 30th meeting was that Honer had three teams working on these projects. So that's encouraging that they've got that much manpower that's.
And also had brought on as a team member, someone who has particular expertise in the conversion of gyms to performing arts centers. So that's comforting to know that they're bringing someone in with some experience there. So that's really good.
All right. So we'll go on to item C.
I'll stand up for this.
Mr. Housen will present a summer school update. Is this for yourself or for Dr. Williams or?
Well, since I started this, I told her I would finish it and then turn it over to her for next year. An update about our summer session. So first of all, just at Rala High School, we have hosted two summer sessions. The first in June was online only for nine through 12 semester classes, ones that we designed and a few from our launch partners as well. We had a July, we're having in the middle of a July session at Rala High School as well with seated offerings as well as nine through 12 online class offerings. We are also doing the driving portion of the June online driver's ed classes during this time. We have three cars. Again, as we always say, big thank you to Fairground Chevrolet for providing us for those cars to teach our young drivers. That is going well. You've probably seen some student driver cars around Rala, I hope. But we have three cars going on a daily basis. So at the high school only, our online enrollment numbers, in June, we had 678 individual courses taken, another 141 online classes in July for a total of over 800 sessions taken this summer, which is very large number for our high school summer school. There, because of the number of kids taking online, there was a limited demand for seated classes at the high school. We currently have 30 students taking seated classes, 13 in driver's ed, 10 in PE and seven for ESY and sped classes. All of that is going well. Very pleased, especially with the online numbers this summer. That's a lot of credits for our kids at RHS. The thing that is new that I want to update you the most on is our K8 Summer School. This was pushed off from our typical timeline during the month of June. Our K8 Summer Program is running from July 6th through July 31st, so tomorrow will be the halfway point. We are offering seated classes, the K through three grades at Wyman Elementary, four through eight grades at Rala Middle School. You know, we didn't know what the interest would be in coming back for a summer school session. So our, at the, at the end of our enrollment window, the first day of school, you can see we had combined between those two buildings, 366 students at least sign up to say they were coming to summer school. We also didn't know what our retention would look like once we got back in classes and kids started attending. So as of today, I wanted to give you an update. Currently between those two buildings, we are at 300 students total. We have contacted all the families who didn't come. There are a variety of reasons that they didn't come, either through just changing their mind or wanting to do other things, going out of state. But fear of COVID exposure was a primary reason that people dropped their summer school enrollment. Not all of those, but I would say, but certainly over half of those were out of fear of coming back to school, which I think is reflected in, in where we are right now. A breakdown of our enrollment at each grade level and the number of teachers, our goal Our goal was to stay between 10 and 15 in a class size as we started to re-entering, having kids back in our building. So you can see the numbers in each grade. I say, the, the biggest place that we lost students was sixth, seventh, and eighth grade as they got there and kind of lost interest in summer school. You can see we perhaps end up maybe slightly overstaffed there, but not bad. Those class sizes allow us to spread kids out in the room. It allows us to cohort within the building really well. It allows us to just get restarted on having people in our building, again. Little bit about what we look like during the summer. Again, I've used the cohort model a lot this year, but we are scheduling recess and hallway movement so that the number of people out about in a common area at any one time is limited. We did revise our arrival and dismissal procedures, all in the name of eliminating any large group gathering of students at any one time. So they're reporting directly to their classrooms and not waiting in a common area as we used to. We have spread out our dismissal times and our dismissal procedures to keep distancing between kids as they're waiting for cars to show up. We are serving breakfast and lunch in the classroom. We have asked teachers to eliminate the use of shared materials in the classrooms and to use their summer school supply money to buy individual supplies for the students. Small numbers have allowed us to space in the classroom about as effectively as we can. Again, we're between 10 and 15 students in a classroom, so that has been very helpful. Teachers are doing symptom screening of their students daily. And by that, I, I don't mean, I don't want you to think we're scanning temperatures every day. We are not. But we are having teachers check with their students every day how they are feeling. We have had instances where we've had some symptoms and had to send students home. But everything has been clear and everything has gone well so far. So like I said, tomorrow will be the halfway point of our four-week summer school. And also a lot, I don't want to leave out, a lot of teaching about hand washing routines, use of hand sanitizer before, after recess, eating, keeping everything cleaned up. Seems to be going really well. I would say it was a nice re-entry to having kids in the building. It is different though, starting with our entire district in August. But this, we learned a lot from some of the parts of our summer school. Little bit about transportation. Our summer school bus stops throughout the community, we are running nine bus routes. We have 126 riders in the morning, 151 going home in the afternoon. We run four special education bus routes, 27 in the morning, 31 in the afternoon. I mean, if you add up the AM and compare it to the PM and remember that our total enrollment in K8 Summer School is about 300 kids, half are coming on the buses to summer school. So it's, it's nice that we're able to provide that service. So that was quick. I will take any questions, feedback, anything you've heard about our summer school program, anything. I, I think we're meeting the needs. Again, the focus is on core academic areas and, and making sure that those kids that are there are covering their grade level objectives and are ready for school come August 24th to move to the next higher grade level.
I think the only feedback I got was just really positive as far as their, you know, parents were happy to send their kids back to school and, and you're wearing them out.
That's good to hear. That's good to hear.
They're resting well at night.
Good. Good. Okay. Thank you, guys.
All right. Item D, comments. Board members are welcome to comment on the events of the school district. Anybody have any comments?
How's, how's Pearl? Have we heard from her lately? Is she doing good?
Pearl, our student ref?
Our student ref?
She's doing her, I don't, I don't know what shit going on tonight. She said she hasn't been checking her school emails often and so she actually emailed me this morning and told me that she wasn't making time, so.
Hopefully she's enjoying her summer.
Well, I'll draw your attention to the written reports at the end of the packet and we'll see you all on July the 30th. They'll have a motion for dismissal.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Charla, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Shannon, your last action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we adjourn.